All right.
All right, Christopher, do you, are you host already?
Uh, I think I saw that you were the host, but let me just check.
I do not want that power.
She's taking two weeks off from work. She's coming down here, so.
There's two, okay.
Yeah, I, I just reclaimed it, so I'm now the host.
All right, perfect.
Trying to get things squared away.
Okay.
So we're gonna find out who the veterans agent is. So.
Seems like this doesn't wanna work.
Got it. So, um, oh gosh, this is still bad. Um, we're gonna do a little clip here. This is what Zoom does to you. All two years of Zoom, it's a horrible, horrible thing. Okay, so I would make a motion to go to item, action item four, John Kelly and Gibbs Road. Is there a second? Any discussion?
No.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Welcome. You're welcome to, to stay, cuz you have a microphone there hanging from the ceiling, or you can join us at the table.
Well, I do.
Whatever you like.
I do have some, uh, material people.
Okay.
And, uh, might be easier to just, at least one of the two.
I'm gonna sit the time being.
Okay.
Of course. Sure. So we're talking Gibbs Road, correct?
Sixty-one.
Okay. Okay.
And you can see in picture one, uh, probably a half to three quarters of an epic.
Okay.
Um, it's always been seasonal wetlands there, in fact, uh, way, way back over a hundred years ago, there was a small prairie. Log on there, it's still living prairies back there.
Oh, that's pretty cool.
Yeah, but, uh, it always had, uh, a little bit there with twenty-one years ago, and twelve inch rain.
Okay.
That process appeared, and, uh.
Dave, do you wanna join us for Gibbs Road? I know that, cuz we had talked a little bit about.
I got that.
You got it, okay.
I got, I got, I got something else on that too.
Okay.
Okay. Picture two, just looking from the other direction.
Yep, oh gosh.
Uh, picture three is, uh, similar, just looking into the woods, so you could kinda see the, uh, flooding. Picture four, kind of puts the, uh, exclamation part, that was taken yesterday.
Oh, wow, yeah, okay.
So, not only is, you know, if you look at the soils, there's three different types of soils on the property, but, uh, Peacham, Hillsbury, both are very fresh water, that's in that swale area.
Mm-hmm.
Rest of it is Peru, Sandy Longwood, he's doing the farmland.
Uh, the culvert.
The farmland flooded like that. Uh, picture five is just a critical, we took a picture of on Gibbs Road.
Okay.
He's the, he's.
Yes.
The flooding.
Yeah.
And if you can see on picture six.
There, yeah.
You can actually see some of the, uh, the signs. This is actually on the eastern side of the road, and that is the, the outflow that still exists. So I did a, a little estimation.
Mm-hmm.
And it's forming above the same as a, a four inch pipe.
Okay.
So the hydraulic radius of the twelve inch pipe is when it's either blood crushed, rusted, something.
Yeah.
You know, with a probe, you could probably, a camera put in there.
Is that a by Fontaine Farm?
That's correct, yeah. Yeah, that's right down from, uh, fifty-four. And that's where it washed up, yeah, that's what we fixed today. Thank you. Um, picture seven is the actual remaining flow from the pipe.
Okay.
So it's not completely blocked, but it's not flowing like a twelve inch pipe should.
Okay.
That's picture eight. That's the last one.
Okay.
That just kinda gives you guys an idea about what's going on. And of course, we've been on the ground, so no one's.
So any of this water flowed toward Long Pond?
It goes towards, it's a pond down in the back of Long.
It was behind it.
It's behind it, and it's part of the Watson Brook.
Okay.
Ends up in Blair, most likely. Then, we're right on the edge of the, the watershed divide.
Yeah.
As you first come in to Gibbs Road, that's Farmington watershed.
Mm-hmm.
Haley Pond on the, the former Walsh property, which still Walsh property, no, the Simington property, that's Farmington.
Mm-hmm.
And then in the middle, we have stuff that goes towards.
That broke it, you're, got pictures of here, that crosses Route twenty-three right over by the old small stakehouse.
Oh, okay.
Right there, Eddie the Plats driveway, you can see where the state keeps digging the beaver out.
Yeah.
That's that brook. I know, because years ago, I walked an excavator in, went all the way down to the ledges where that beaver dam start. And I took the beaver dams out, two and a half hours later, we had a little problem on twenty-three. But it was overlooked, but, uh.
There's plenty of beaver up there.
So, um, just, I wanna bring you up to date on, um, the discussions we've been having about that particular area, just so that you're aware. Um, it has been brought to our attention that the beavers are damming there, and that it's causing, you know, that there's concern about the, the overflow. Um, so we've been back and forth with Springfield water a little bit, because, um, actually, a couple times, Dave had, um, tried to, um, secure a, a person to come up and work with the beaver dams, and there had been some kickback from Springfield based on specifics of their license or whatever. Um, well, the more we talked about and thought about it, the more we felt like this really Springfield water shouldn't be paying for any beaver damage and control on their property. Um, so we are now, that's as much as we can say, because now, you know, we've reached out and have asked our attorneys for some input in that area. Um, in the meantime, however, we can't let the road, um, obviously flood. So I guess we need to figure out what we can do in the meantime as a solution prior to dealing with the beavers, because that is the next step.
Now, on the western side, there's no beaver. I showed you a picture of the beavers that are in there.
Okay.
Um, they're not quite there yet. So what, what we're looking at is, uh, whether it's a chapter ninety issue with the, the color.
Mm-hmm.
As a replacement, or some, some work to investigate exactly what the problem is, because I don't know, I don't have a little white camera to send up that thing and actually turn around. Most of it's, it's a twelve inch, that twisted galvanized, and, uh, it usually rot out on the bottom after a period of years.
Mm-hmm.
So, it's just, uh, eventually in the summer, this probably will go away, but, uh.
Same time, yeah.
Yeah, it, it, it needs to, uh, it's, it needs to be addressed, because it's done a little worse. We've got, uh, more trucks up there now, with, uh, higher pressure in the tires, which is, uh, causing potential crushing.
Mm-hmm.
Um. So just wanna bring it up to date and, uh, see what we both can do. One of the things that I'm kind of curious about is that after, I think it was around December eighteenth, uh, there was a couple of those brought in and, and, and raised, and that raised the water level, because there was nowhere for it to go.
Mm-hmm.
And after the water came way up, all of a sudden, all these open flags started appearing. So like, now, I, I know I had wetland.
Mm-hmm.
Now I have like triple the wetlands because of the damming situation.
Hmm.
Which is kinda weird.
Yeah.
Well, until you get rid of the beaver, you're gonna have that wetland. That's what they do, which create wetland.
Correct.
And, uh, with the laws they've got now regulating the trappers and town of Blanford to our highway department, we're kinda hamstrung as to what we can do. Uh, every time you wanna move, you gotta get permission from somebody to do it. So it's not a problem that's gonna disappear overnight.
Now, I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, but do, are there laws in place to remove a beaver dam if they would flood a road? If, if their dams would flood?
Get all permits to do that.
So, but that's the process that Springfield water was taking.
Right.
Correct? But they were just asking us to be paying for.
Right, right.
The work.
Um, when you're looking up the Fontaine Farm, your property is on the left-hand side, correct?
That's right, okay.
And you do have beavers in that area.
Well, we're on my grounds, uh, on the left across from Long Pond. So that's all my ground there, and, uh, there's really no beaver issue until we get down into the soil.
Down by?
By where the pictures.
Foot to right.
Yeah.
Right, and, uh, that whole glacial deposit on either side of it, you get into those really substandard soils and rich water. So you throw a drum, and everything else off to the side gets wet really fast.
Mm-hmm.
So the back part of my property is, uh, fresh water, I mean, the trees are sticking out around it, it's all that.
But the beavers are, I saw, I saw a picture of a beaver right there.
Yeah.
First I seen on the road.
Yeah, I, I got, I almost, that's the best, I had three shots of it.
Yeah.
I, I wish I took a different shot, but. And.
What a different kinda camera.
Yeah.
So, so.
I believe right now the beaver season before. We couldn't get in an emergency through Florida Health.
Okay.
Uh, I could get ahold of somebody, but you would have to pay.
What I'm worried about, what I see is the main problem is the pipe slowly deteriorating.
Yeah, the culvert.
It's the culvert itself.
That's been in the process the last, uh, two years or so. Um, I can't do anything right now, cuz DEP has something to do with it. Because if, that's the one when, uh, so if you're gonna find.
Okay. Oh, is that the one that they're gonna be repairing?
Do, yes.
Can we show them this, this evidence that it needs to happen immediately? I mean, can we push it along a little bit?
I have a meeting with him on the twenty-ninth.
Okay.
With DEP. Uh, I also have another meeting on the twenty-fifth with Springfield watershed.
Okay. Are, are attorneys involved in that situation?
Uh, no. No, this is it. She, they want Springfield water, wants to come in and do some repairs on the roads in that IGA agreement we have.
Yeah, yeah.
So she wants to go with me and Mr. Gates.
Okay.
And discuss what has to be done for that part.
Okay.
For the E part, Jones coming out, the new guy who's, uh, tenured for the area, is coming on to look at the area and discuss it. Last I knew, um, the year, he has sent plans forward.
Mm-hmm.
To DEP and to the lawyers for, for the design that they want to use.
Okay.
Uh, they wanna install two four-foot culverts in there. Um, send, send down, about two feet down, and so give them nice, some flow of water through there.
Okay. So there's a plan to replace the culvert?
Oh, yes.
Um, can we expedite the situation based on the flooding? Do you think we can?
I, it's, it's up to DEP and.
Yeah.
The design. Whether, what it really needs to be, the road needs to be by another ten feet wider on each side.
Mm-hmm.
And raise, and raise up about four feet.
Yeah.
With this nice drainage.
I, I wouldn't mind a pond there. You know, to be honest with you, for, for a couple of reasons, one, for fire protection, for dry hydrogen.
True.
Yeah.
Um, because it really isn't anything on that high water, and you've got, you've got a history of rather vicious fires up there. And I look across the street at my neighbor, and I, I just shake my head at that barn everyone. So, I'd like to be involved, if, if, this is the, the issue, um, in, exactly what can be done, and whatever help I can render, or.
That'll be great.
We have a meeting the twenty-ninth at ten o'clock there.
Um, where is that meeting, or can it be joined via Zoom?
It's gonna be on Gibbs Road.
Oh, it's gonna be there?
Yeah.
Okay. There you go, okay, um.
We're good timing, huh?
Perfect.
Okay, and do you think we need to try to get the emergency, um, approval from Board of Health for the beaver trapping, or? Okay.
Now, maybe Dave or John can answer this question. Uh, I'll pull in the road up past the Fontaine place, and it goes down into that, and then I took a ride up there, cuz I was wondering about the, you know, the drainage there, and, uh, when he put in that road and it goes down, now I noticed that there's water on both sides of that road. Did he put in culverts or anything there, do you know?
He put a relief drain on the north side of the, the road. In fact, um, one of these pictures, I think that, I think it's back here in six, I think it was number seven. One of them was actually across from, maybe within that. Two, three, four, five, six, seven. It would've been page eight, that didn't include the original pack.
Okay.
But that, um, we'll shut up here, the culvert goes across, and then it used to take all the eastbound water coming down past our house, cut across away from the Fontaine Farm, and onto my side. And that, as he wrote it so much, it's just, see the piles of dirt now?
Mm-hmm.
And it's just got this pool of mosquito breeding material just sitting there, and, uh, at some point, it needs to be addressed, like, you know? We, we bought it the way it was, we kinda knew what it was, uh, water flows downhill, and understand that, so it was somewhere.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but we, you know, with the interceptor drain now on that old road where the little schoolhouse was, uh, that has taken about half the water away that comes back underneath the road.
Mm-hmm.
So this is just recent, so, but I can actually see some of the erosion from that drain, because it was flooding the barn.
Yeah.
Okay.
So it has helped then.
So that's water that goes directly near Long Pond.
Can I say something?
Of course.
In November.
Mm-hmm.
I broke my leg, unfortunately. It was the middle of the night, and I had to wait five hours for it to get daylight, so the ambulance could come up and pick me up and take me, I had to have surgery. Um, and the only reason we had to wait was because the road had eroded so much
Mm-hmm.
that if the ambulance tried to get there during the night, it wouldn't have made it. It would've been in a probably three-foot ditch. Up till then, I was driving and walking my dogs and everything. Unfortunately, can't do that right now.
Mm-hmm.
I'm not quite healed enough, but my main thing is if something else happens.
Absolutely.
You know, then, I don't wanna have to wait in pain.
Sure.
For five hours, so I have to get to the hospital.
Yeah.
And the other thing is, I, if, it's, and I know winter is really tough. We've been through twenty of them.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but this past year, it's, it's been terrible. The road has been absolutely horrendous.
Okay.
And I can't afford to have anything happen to my health, and I, I also know that the gal, Mrs. Templeman.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and she's gonna be, what, a hundred and one?
I think we just celebrated her hundredth birthday, was it last year? We had a parade.
Last I knew, she was in a nursing home, yeah.
So between the two of us, you know, it's like.
Yeah.
You know, I, I think of her all the time.
Sure.
Cuz her part of the road is bad too.
Mm-hmm.
Especially in the wintertime.
Yeah.
But, um.
Yeah.
Well, the road is much better than, than, I mean, the work that was done.
The whole road, yeah, it's just those two spots.
Okay.
The problem with roads in Massachusetts, and this goes for everything, you know, so deep drain base. On the dirt roads, they're not carbon high enough like they do in Pennsylvania, you gotta keep them dry.
Yeah.
And, uh, once you do get the water off the side of the road, you've gotta slow it down. It doesn't exceed two meters per second, because once it gets going that fast, it takes everything.
Yeah.
And that's what it's been doing.
And it sits, so if, if you gouge it out and have a drain, it puts rip wrap and slow it down, because otherwise.
So I was out there Sunday and, uh, just taking a tour. Dave loves me, I go out there and check the roads for him, and, uh, anyhow. So anyways, uh, I was out there, and the whole road seems like sponge.
Yeah.
You know, even when you get up past where the old school was, where the Lincoln's place was, and it's flat.
Once you get up to the top, that's, that's all playbase.
Yeah.
And right above Mrs. Templeman, that has been notorious in one season, and so far, so good.
Not far from home.
Yeah, that was good.
It's actually, uh, because that used to run horrifically.
Yeah.
And the ice in the wintertime, this year was much worse.
Really?
Oh, it was terrible. There were times when, if he didn't have, he had cleats put on his tires, and if he hadn't had them put on, I don't think we would've been able to get.
Yeah.
One way or the other.
Yeah.
Yeah. But what is, we, we have cleats on.
Yeah.
We appreciate the, the, that's.
Yeah, um, thank you. I'm sorry that it's gotten to that point. It's been really frustrating for us going back and forth with that situation with Springfield. Um, and it's, un- unfortunately, there are these situations we find ourselves in with Springfield, where we wanna support our residents and provide, but we, we're trying to like hold our ground a little with Springfield and like, and, and fight a little bit, and it's hard, cuz we don't want our residents to suffer. So I think this is, again, again, with the plowing situation, kind of one of those, one of those situations for us, but it sounds like you guys are gonna meet on the twenty-ninth. And I think you'll have some valuable input to give to DEP, um, when they, when you guys meet and talk about what's going on with that. Um, and then we'll continue to push forward on our end with Springfield to get them to do something about the beavers on, in the area.
Well, probably, it, it could be a natural disaster.
Absolutely, yeah.
Especially now. I didn't expect to fall and break my leg.
I know.
It's one of those things that happens.
Yeah.
You get old and.
Yeah.
Things happen. Um, but Mrs. Templeman too, I mean, if anything happens to her.
Yeah.
And I can't get to her in time, it could be life or death.
Is she at her house now? She was in a nursing home.
She was?
Yeah, she's been there for a while.
Well, I haven't, I haven't seen her since, since I've been housebound myself, so.
Yeah.
You know, it's been six months since I've heard anything from her.
Okay.
She's still been in regular care, but.
Okay.
And it does the, uh, the, uh, but now you mention it, I haven't seen her.
Yeah.
That activity there, so probably is a, a nurse. I guess we're.
Okay. Yeah, thank you very much. Um, please reach back out if you have any more questions, or, you know, anything else comes up.
Gmails or, yeah, please, yes, thank you very much.
Thank you. Question, yes? Okay, for audience participation. Yeah, audience participation. Sounds good.
Well, the.
Board of Health, do you guys wanna come up?
Sure.
Hello. You're gonna not have to join us on a Monday night? What else could you possibly have to do? Besides come to a select board meeting? Nothing, that's what I thought. All right, so welcome. So Christopher, did you ask for Board of Health to join us?
Oh, yeah, so, um, I, I, I was gonna wait until our report, but I can jump into it now.
Okay.
Um, so let me, let me just pull up my stuff here. Um, okay, yeah, so, so this past week, um, DEP reached out to me, uh, to let us know uh, that they have not been receiving any paper tonnage from our, uh, transfer station for the last, well, they, they said maybe six months, could be longer. Um, so, for background, basically, we're one of the sixty-plus dual-stream communities in Western Mass that deliver both containers and paper recyclables to, uh, the materials recycling facility, or the MRF in Springfield. Um, and that tonnage is supposed to be, you know, they, they weigh it, and they process it, and do all that kinda stuff. And then based on, you know, what it's worth, uh, in the market, uh, we potentially get a rebate back, uh, for that tonnage. And it's usually, um, you know, it, it varies a lot, because the, the, the average market value of this stuff changes a lot, as I'm sure Brett could tell you. But we're one of the only communities that, for whatever reason, for the last six months to a year, possibly longer, have not been having our paper recyclables go to this facility, so we've been missing out on any potential payments from that. Um, so I reached out to, um, WM, who is the, the, who operates the MRF. Um, and they provided, uh, some reports from the last year or so that just demonstrate that. Uh, and then I talked with Brett and Jennifer, and it sounds like, um, correct me if I'm wrong, Brett, but it sounds like our hauler, USA Recycling and Hauling, had been taking all that paper and bringing it to their facility, rather than to the MRF. Um, which is contrary to their contract. Um, and I don't know, you know, I'm still trying to figure out if we're really owed that much money here, it's possible we're not.
Okay.
But, uh, so that's, that's the background. Brett or Jennifer, I don't know if you have anything else to add?
Well, how much money are they talking? We get checks from them almost every other week. I mean, I've got another one that just came in today when I got the mail. We're always getting a check, or a rebate check, so I guess I'm not. That from MRF? Yes.
Yeah, so I, I'm still trying to figure that out. Um, so what I, what I'm doing is going through all the, the DEP reports, because that lists the average market value for tonnage different times of the year. And then I have to look at our internal tonnage as recorded for paper recycling goods, cardboard, et cetera, and then kind of figure, do the math there. Um, I don't, I don't think it's gonna be, you know, looking back over the last six months, I think it's about eight hundred dollars. And actually, of course, we sometimes owe money, because, you know, we, we send stuff, and then the processing fee is actually more than what it's worth. Um, so I'm still trying to figure that out, but, um, I don't think it's gonna be a hugely substantial amount of money, but of course, um, we do want them delivering it to that facility, since that's what's in their contract.
Yeah, so, um, going forward, have we, um, had that conversation with USA Hauling? Is that what?
We'll change our contract.
What is our contract currently say?
They start bringing down Springfield, it's gonna change things. They bring it to end of now.
Are they sup- Are they supposed to bring it to Springfield, or?
They can, but, but change, you know, trucking and stuff.
Okay.
My, my understanding from DEP is that they're supposed to bring it to the MRF. Um, and it sounds like this has happened in other communities, where, you know, if the, the value of both, the value of recyclables gets to a certain level, some of the haulers will say, oh, actually, I could just take this to my own facility. Um, I don't know if they did this intentionally, or if just somebody didn't realize the deal with the contract. Um, but it, it sounds like they're definitely supposed to be taking that to the MRF.
That just them like, we're managing.
Question, Dave?
You have a contract with Waste Management, correct?
US.
USA.
USA, why is Waste Management in?
Cause they, Waste Management's so glamorous, they own everything in the world, just about.
Well, not really, but I know.
Well, they're the biggest, one of the biggest ones.
Right. So. It makes no sense.
And some of our haulers go to Waste Management.
If you hire that hauler to go to eat, they're MRF. I, I don't understand why Waste Management has anything to do with it.
Well, you've only been one over the MRF. Our refund, right, we would still be getting the checks from Waste Management. Um, I've been on the Board of Health for what, four years now, and I've always gotten a check from Waste Management. It's always been Waste Management.
Yeah, wait, to be clear, Waste, Waste Management, sorry, Waste Management has the contract to operate the MRF. So that's why checks are coming from them. It's a, it's a DEP-run program, but, but WM has the contract to run the MRF.
Yeah, that's how it goes so far. They run the MRF, you, and you have the hauler, or it should take two Waste Managers.
Me working. And nobody else needs to jump into it.
Okay.
Ten years.
So, so Brett, you're gonna?
I've been talking to our contact.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
See what happens. See, I, it doesn't happen overnight.
Yeah.
I talked to Chris earlier.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was supposed to take care of him.
Okay, all right. So if you guys can just stay in communication with Christopher, and then hopefully it'll just get resolved, and if you need anything else. Okay, alright, so if you guys can just stay in communication with Christopher and then hopefully it'll just get resolved and if you need anything else.
But do know we are getting our refunds.
Okay, that's good.
Are getting, we are getting our refunds. I think the only difference is we wait a whole year to get a refund from.
Mm-hmm.
Springfield, and here we're getting a check for two to three hundred dollars. Every.
Okay.
Every few weeks.
Okay. Um, and just so you know, when, um, when the, that came to me, um, I told Christopher to go ahead and put it on the, the meeting for tonight. So that's, that's on me that I said, go ahead and put it on the meeting, because I was worried that, you know, if there was something where we were not. Getting what we were supposed to be receiving. Okay. Okay.
And Jennifer, real quick, if you have copies of those rebates or anything that you could share, that would be helpful. I, I, as I understand it, we're getting. Checks for the loose containers, but we're just not getting the paper. Um, but if that's actually not the case and there's some mix up, that would be good to know.
Alright, alright, thank you guys. Have a lovely Monday. Um, okay, do you want to, so the only other things we are gonna back up to was examining our meeting minutes and actually we have, um. Dave, we'll let Dave go and then we'll, um, we can go through the rest of your report, Christopher. Alright, Dave.
Okay.
What do you got for us?
That's the, uh, for coal works replaced.
Yes, they do.
Right through that wall, huh?
Yeah. Worked well.
I was getting some, someone had been concerned about the ditches out there when, where you guys were doing, replacing culverts and.
Yeah.
Okay, ditches are part of the deal or is that separate? Okay. Okay.
They, they're just doing the gold.
Got it.
Uh. Doing shoulder work on our land, working very well so far.
Okay.
Um, I took the ride Saturday, injected the other roads.
Really?
Yeah, there's very little running.
That's great.
If it's like that, other than that.
Good.
That stuff, that crushed granite makes a big difference, Sean.
Yes, it does. Yes, it does. Um, we'll go back to. Springfield.
Okay.
This is, I know, I left an email from a call. You like, we, we, would you both be available, me and Dick? On Friday twenty fifth to visit sites with myself and the Commissioned Water Superintendent, visit various areas in Blanford. We are preparing to install two informational kiosks. Regarding conservation areas and gearing up for roadwork and the watershed this spring and summer. You would like to discuss this work in the field and determine what permits, approvals, curb cut signs. Wetland will be necessary to move this work forward. I will send out a light site locus. For the areas early next week, but would like to visit the following areas with you. All conservation recently, what the recently acquired to twelve acres, which I do believe is right.
Yeah.
That little swampy area.
Yeah.
On existing commissioned public land areas off North Blanford Road near Long Pond. Uh, areas that contain stockpile stone for future wood, wo- roadwork and public section of South Street. I sent both emails to Mr. Gates.
Okay, thank you.
Um, twenty ninth, uh, we are looking to try to set up onsite for more string, not like that. A new staff consultant, you and, uh, Mr. Gates are there. Just wanna look at it, at the site, so, and. It would be nice to get in contact with them because they've lost probably half of their force.
Okay.
To, um, the COVID shock.
Wait, oh, forest. I think so, they must, most of their forests. I was so confused.
The workforce.
Okay. Um, okay, so. Can I take a look? Sorry. I think I'm a better visual learner than auditory. Okay, so this is, got it. Okay, so you have it all set up, you know who needs to be there and it's scheduled. Hold on one second, Mary, let me just finish. Comprehending this. Okay, so these are two separate.
Yes.
So Springfield is the twenty fifth and it's.
DEP is the twenty ninth. Yeah.
Okay, and this is.
Two different things.
So they're putting in informational kiosks? For what? Gearing up for roadway work on the watershed for the roadway work on the watershed this spring.
Well, isn't that that Schoolhouse Road and Standard Road and all that?
Where are they putting kiosks?
No, the, what's the one, uh, South Quarter Road or South?
So.
South Olvis Road they were gonna do.
South Quarter Road over on the General Lock Road.
I guess my question is, are informational kiosks their form of recreation, like passive recreational, like they're trying to like?
No, it's make work for their.
Or it could be just an information of what's going on. I'm not, I'll, I'll find out more like.
Yeah, I would, I just have questions about what those are and where they're, because it's, they're saying kiosk regarding conservation areas. So I'm just curious about where those are going and what those are. Um, and then I guess you'll talk about specifically where they're doing the roadway work on the watershed. Um. So they wanna talk about permits or approvals. Okay, so curb cut signs they need. For haul.
Pretty much that, that's Mr. Mr. Gates on all that.
Okay. Did you guys need to see that? I, thank you. That was helpful. Mary, question?
Um. Dave answered it, it was DEP on China. Could I have a copy of that?
Yeah. You can always snap a photo of it. See how fancy that is? That's what my students do. Let me just take a picture.
Yes.
It's fancy. Um. Okay.
That's that. Now, um, Chris, you there?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, you will be here Wednesday, correct?
That's correct, yeah.
Alright, because I have this Franklin County Council of Governments that needs to be signed. It says, signature required for participation. Would that be you taking, uh, the head on this and paying for the, the bids?
Yeah, if, uh, if that's something that Josh used to sign for, yeah.
Okay. Because this is gotta be sent, I have this sent out to her on the twenty fourth.
Okay.
For fuel, being oil and gas.
Okay.
For bits, and I think it's very important to have it done this year.
Yeah, absolutely.
For the upcoming.
Perfect. We're held and. I can't even. Um, okay, so let me just look back at my notes and see if they, any other questions for you. Um. Any progress on Nybrook or are we?
Uh, they, they started today.
Okay.
It's a little, little copper dam.
Mm-hmm.
He's got two bums in it, and he's gonna see how it goes tomorrow.
Okay.
If he's gonna make. Uh, another pump, you know, pump for it.
Okay.
So.
Great.
But other than that, things are going really well.
Um, what's going on with the truck? You had.
Truck, I just got emailed from the other day when I was here.
Okay, oh, I'm sorry to hear that. Oh, that's terrible. I'm sorry.
Um, this is what they found, uh, they have a fuel pressure code. And they've been trying to diagnose, they are working with Mac, like we spoke about it.
Okay, that's all you got?
Yeah.
Okay. Um. It doesn't sound very promising.
How much fun we're done on that warranty?
Yeah. Are they just trying to?
Well, it is, it, it's been in three times already, because this is the third time it's been in.
Yeah.
Did you, were you able to check on the lemon latte? Okay, um, so I'm wondering if we should really be starting to think that. It's, you know, with this, this sounds very sort of like.
I'm just worried about how long it's gonna take you to truck.
Yeah. Yeah.
You know?
Well, part of, go ahead.
We may be at the point where we should be talking with corporal about it.
Yeah. Um. I think that we might wanna start preparing for that.
I'll give them a call tomorrow, probably on Thursday to get it.
Okay. Yeah, just let them know third time, et cetera. Thank you, Dave.
Yeah.
Um, and then the flatbed replacement.
Yes.
You said that, okay, so you put it. You're hoping that it's gonna hold for now?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we're fine there.
I'd like to get, get prepared for it, you know, for next year.
Okay.
You know, I wanna get. The, uh, design of everything else, all set.
Okay.
The price. The thing is that you can't guarantee the price. I mean, it could be seventy thousand dollars next week and a hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
I know, it's not a good time to buy anything right now.
Yes.
Okay.
Even the used stuff is.
I know.
It's, yeah, but I mean, even the used stuff is obvious.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I wanted to ask you, uh. You, you were working on a spoke of work for North Blanford Road for doing the culverts in that?
Yes.
Yeah, is, is that ready to go out?
Nope, not yet.
Yeah.
Not yet.
Okay.
Not yet. I got a couple more things to do, I got something to speak about some stuff up there. Seems to be, it's gonna be over with.
Good.
But I'm gonna replace, um, there is some catch bases there that. Okay, anyway. Maybe just fixed.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I'm not sure about this, there's two in the village.
Mm-hmm.
That have a catch basin.
Oh.
Um, and I'm hoping that it's. It'll slide out, you know, really demolishing and just suddenly pipe into it.
Yeah.
Just throw it all around the edges on there, so.
You know about the catch basin in front of. That house up there on the left, just before Gibson's.
For Gibson's.
Up where we had the emergency call Monday morning. I fell in the damn thing.
Just roll?
No, on North Blanford Road. Just this side of Wyman's, who's on the farm on the right. That new house, right in front of that house, there's a catch basin all covered up with leaves.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Oh, that's the, the house that replaced the one that burnt down?
Yeah. Oh, that one, yes. Yeah, that's the one that, um, Jane and I, we worked with the large flows into.
Okay.
Yeah, that's the one. And there's one before that too, on the right hand side, yeah. There, and those are, those are marked. To replace anyway.
Okay, so. Now, those, those catch basins along North Blanford Road, they all go toward the brook?
Um, they're all, yes.
Yeah.
But it's, it's not, it's a runoff.
Yeah, right, right, right. No, I, I was just wondering if, you know. We're gonna have a problem with the DEP.
Now, should we have a lot?
Yeah, okay.
And he said that if it's not running, if it's just seasonal.
Yeah.
Runs and stops, there's, there'd be no issues.
Oh, good.
But I will verify that in my talk.
Okay.
Thank you.
And we got, the, the thing is, I'm gonna have, once I find out everything that he knows and wants to either. Fix, change or whatever, then I'm gonna have the, um, the contractors come in and do the walking.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Okay.
Cool.
Alright. We busy up there.
Sounds good. Thank you, Dave.
You're welcome.
Take care of yourself.
Yeah, you too.
Alright, um, we have meeting minutes to approve, but, um, do you guys wanna just keep going and do the, um?
Alright.
Finish the report.
They're gonna be approved sometime.
I haven't read them yet.
Oh.
I need a minute. Okay. Um, hold on, let me just finish reading these.
Oh, I got a question. For Chris, I spoke to Joanne about it. Do you have a, a? A form or something? I have to hire, uh, some people for cemetery. I lost my cemetery people. And, uh. I need some kind of form to put a advertisement in a paper for, you know, some kind of help.
Yeah, uh, we should have something. I'll, I'll take a look around. I'll put it on my list.
Okay, thank you.
Going forward, Christopher is also reviewing the notes.
Okay.
Three sets of eyes in there.
That's good. Alright, I make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of February twenty eighth as written.
Sure.
Any discussion?
No.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, now I'm reading March seventh. Well, that was another thing, Joanne, we were looking at an increase was the, um, animal control officer. Budget, because she was gonna submit an actual budget for the other job. I knew there's something else we talked about. Okay, good. Make a motion to approve meeting minutes of March seventh as written.
Sure.
Any discussion?
No.
On favor?
Alright.
Aye.
And then anybody's financial.
They'll have to, yeah, they'll have to prove it separate. Um, motion to approve the executive session meeting minutes from March fourteenth as written.
Second.
Any discussion? On favor? Uh, motion to table the meeting minutes of March fourteen, sir, second?
Second.
Discussion? Favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, that's for you to sign. We're gonna table them until next week.
I didn't get some.
Alright. We've got these two, hold on, I got one more. Alright. Okay. That's it. Oh.
Oh, that's the executive session.
That's the executive.
Okay, and I'm collecting the.
The other. Here we go. Thank you. Got it. Wants the executive one. She took it from him, okay. Alright. We're back on, okay, um. Christopher, do you wanna go through your report with us?
Yeah, let me, uh, share my screen again here. Alright, I'll try to go through some of this relatively quickly. Um, so first thing, uh, budget. So we had some more, uh, budget request meetings last week. Uh, we spoke with Chief Weatis, uh, as well as Gateway Regional School District. Uh, we got to hear a little bit more about that education stabilization fund that Chester has. Uh, since it was, it was a joint meeting with Chester. Um, so, uh, a little bit more about that in a bit. Uh, and then this coming week on Thursday afternoon, we're gonna be meeting with the Building Inspector, Playing Board, Recreation and myself. Uh, for, for those department budget requests.
How would the police, um, budget?
Yeah, um, so, um, Chester's FinCom took a pretty strong line against. The level of increase that the chief was looking for, both in her salary and the overall department budget.
Okay.
You know, it was, it was certainly a big ask, so, um, you know, anticipated some of that. Um. And then in terms of Gateway, you know, they, they're, they've got their education stabilization funds, so they're not too worried about any of that. Um.
So this is our first, um. I wanna say this is the, one of the first obstacles that we'll be coming to as far as like this, this regional shared police. Where we've got this large increase request and I don't know how Blanford Finance feels about it. Where we've got this large increase request and I don't know how Blanford Finance feels about it, like if we're. If we're all on the same page, or it'll just be an interesting journey to come to a happy medium. Um, there, because I don't think this is a battle that we've faced yet with a shared police service, so we'll see.
Yeah, yeah, and we'll have to discuss it further once we've gotten kind of all their requests squared away, but yeah, it's, it's, it's a large request. Moving on to, well, let me know if there are any questions about the budget so far. But otherwise, moving on to annual town meeting, special town meeting. So I had mentioned that Sarah had come to us with a few items that she thought should be handled at a special town meeting. I talked to her about it, since we didn't have one planned. And she thinks most of her items can get done at the annual town meeting, so the warrant for that will be due by the end of the month. There was one issue that I think she said she thought had to be done during a special. I'm going to check with her about that. I think we're supposed to speak this week. But let me know if you have any questions about any of those items that we might have to have for, on the warrant for annual town meeting.
Okay.
Mema shelter requirements, just last week, we'd brought this up, just for kind of thinking about the potential need to have a shelter in Blanford. So I looked those up. I can share this, let's see. Yeah, here we go. So I shared this, it's just, you know, from Mema's toolkit on shelters.
Yeah.
And basically, Blanford, I don't know how easy it is for you guys to see, maybe I'll zoom in a little. It's a little better. So right now, the town hall is kind of at this personal care site level. And then, you know, so what we might be looking to do is make the upgrades necessary to move to this locally initiated overnight shelter status, so. You need showers, pet sheltering services, so there are a few different things that we need to, to add to the mix to make the town hall appropriate for that. So I'm, I'm going to continue.
Sorry, it's charging stations, okay.
Oh, charging stations, yep, that's on there.
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. Go ahead. It was my.
No. Sorry. Yeah, so anyway, I'm looking at potential grants that, that Mema or DPH might have to, to kind of start doing some of these upgrades so that the town hall can serve that purpose.
That would be, that would be awesome, and so it looked like it wasn't that huge of a difference between that and then the next one. But it would be nice to be a step up and be able to offer that, for sure.
Yeah, absolutely. So we'll keep, I'll keep looking for grants and, and see what's out there, and we can start chipping away at those items. Collins Center, and I know Joanne had kind of already sent everyone an email about this. Just as a reminder, you know, we had this classification and compensation study that the Collins Center was going to do for us. And also a capital improvement plan that they were going to develop. I think we got most of the, most of the job descriptions out of that. But we didn't actually end up getting kind of a pay schedule. And I don't think the capital improvement plan really got started at all. So I reached out to Robert O'Keefe at the Collins Center on Friday. I just left him a message. Joanne forwarded all the information. I need to have that conversation with him. I think the contract is technically over for the classification and compensation piece. But for the CIP, it's still good until June, so I'm going to just see about extending some of those deadlines and seeing if we can get some actual kind of final deliverables from the Collins Center, since it sounds like we don't really have that just yet.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah. Paper recycling, we already talked about that. Canadash. So I, I took what we marked up last week, circulated it to all the relevant departments. You know, the only kind of outstanding item was on that, that curb cut. So we had mentioned maybe wanting to include some language from Mastot's permit about, you know, additional signage or, or things like that to make sure that's safe right at that driveway. I reached out to Mastot. They said they've issued a permit, but it sounds like it hasn't actually. There are some requirements that Belfleur hasn't quite met yet in terms of posting it with the register of deeds.
Okay.
So. All right, waiting to see more. You know, I could just take what we have and send it over to Nicole at KP. Because I, you know, we're about ninety-nine percent of the way there. If that's all right with everyone.
I, yeah, I think that that's fine. Are you guys okay with that, just sending it over to KP, the Canadash host community agreement? We had sort of come to, okay, yeah, that's fine, thank you.
Right. All right. Another item that I think I brought up last week, ADA transition plan, so back in 2020, we got, we sought a community development block grant to do an ADA transition plan. It's finally kind of come back around and, and PVPC got in touch last week and shared draft RFP. So basically, the idea with this would be looking at all the different town-owned properties. You know, surveying department heads and staff about, you know, where we're lacking in terms of ADA compliance. And then coming up with a plan based on that for, you know, how do we meet those requirements and how do we improve our, our standing in that respect? So I can, if we want to go through it real quick, I have a copy of the draft RFP here. The main thing that Gabe from PVPC was asking for was dates. So we can, I, I can go through this and then we can discuss, you know, what makes sense in terms of a timeline.
Okay.
And I can, and if, if people want to take a closer look at this, I can also share this, and we can come back to it next week. It's, it's up to you. But it's twenty thousand dollar contract.
Okay.
Here's the, you know, the description of the main tasks associated with the project. I'll scroll through here. There are a few comments that Gabe wanted us to address. Okay, let's see here. Yep, so here's the list of things that they would look at in terms of ADA compliance. Municipal owned properties, and there's a, a full list in the appendix that'll get to parks and playgrounds, streets, sidewalks, common areas. And school buildings, which we don't have any of, so.
Needs a little help. We've talked about this a few times.
Which park, Watson or?
Um, well, actually, both parks, I don't think are really accessible. This park, there's not accessibility to the, to the, to the actual playground. I don't think there's a paved pathway to that, is there? It's kind of, yeah. I don't think there's like an accessible paved path. Like a bumpy. Hot roll.
We've walked down to that ball field the way it is forever.
The ball field, yeah, there's no accessibility to the ball field either.
They usually park right here in the parking lot and.
Well, we're saying, but for ADA, like if, for a wheelchair. You couldn't, like, we, we have the swing, but a child in a wheelchair couldn't get there unless.
It won't look like our park anymore, but it's time to get done.
No, just a pathway, that's all, yes.
What does ADA stand for?
Um.
It's Americans with Disabilities Act.
Um. Okay, so I, I don't see the list, Christopher, are you sharing the?
Oh, yeah, here, no, no, I'll go down to the list of properties here, hold on. Sorry for making me look at zooming text, here we go. So here, so here's the list.
I still don't see. I see ADA transition plan, green communities.
Oh, hold on, I must be sharing the wrong part of my screen, hold on. Uh, let's see.
Sometimes it locks you into one thing and doesn't.
Yeah, let me see, hold on. Sorry, so you haven't, you probably haven't seen what I've been looking at the whole time.
Okay.
Sorry about that. Yeah, so here's the list. PVPC sent us this, and then I added a few slash, have questions about a few. So we can go through this really quick. So the old firehouse, I know it's on the list. It sounds like, you know, based on the conversations I've heard, it's probably not a structure that we plan on keeping around for very long, so I was going to suggest not including that.
Yeah, I would say that's correct. The firehouse will be hopefully gone.
And then for the highway department.
That's transitioning into the firehouse.
Right, right, and I don't know if they're already doing some kind of check on ADA compliance. So I don't know if it's necessary to include it in this particular plan. I can re, I can check with Dave about that.
It's right at the top. Mary, um, yeah, maybe check with Dave.
All right.
Mary was asking where the library is. It's the second one down.
Oh, I see it.
There you go.
Thank you.
You know, they also mentioned parks. I didn't know if we want to add town-owned conservation lands as well. So Niddle or Long Pond or any of those.
Um, Bradley Brook, I don't even know where that, so it's on Nybrook, huh?
Yeah, there's, there's a little, well, you can explain it better than me.
Bradley Brook starts off the Huntington Road. And Russell's got a flood control dam on Bradley Brook. And it comes down and runs into Nybrook down on the lower end of Russell Stage Road.
Okay.
That, I would say we could exclude that one, Christopher. That's not one that people, I don't think anyone.
Is that the one that's?
Uses that as like a conservation. The only area that people like, actually like hike at would be the middle one. Because that one, actually, we've created hiking trails.
Right, okay.
Um, I wouldn't worry about Long Pond. That's just the water plant, I mean.
Right, well, so I was talking with, with Dick a few weeks ago, and he said he's in the process of putting a, a trailhead in there.
Oh, is he?
Yeah.
Okay.
So we could, we could include it. And then, you know, for, I guess the third one is Shepherd Hill Farm. Which is its own saga, I know.
Um, I don't know if we want to include Shepherd Hill Farm on anything. I mean, it's a disaster.
There are hiking trails out there that I think was Chuck Benson and Tony Van Workhoven and Peter Milford.
How many years ago was that?
Yeah, but I don't think we want to include it in looking at, is it ADA compliant? Because it is not ADA compliant, and do we want to bother making it, or do we want to try to get rid of it? We want to try to get rid of it, I think, is the answer. So I don't think we.
Okay.
Just in the history of conversations I've had around Shepherd Hill, I don't think anyone wants to put any money into it. What is the pole building?
Let's take a look.
On Huntington Road.
Yeah, I was, that's a good question. I don't know what that is.
Um, it could be like a, is it like a Verizon or EverSource thing, a pole building on Huntington Road?
Pole building.
It's like a barn.
Yeah, it's a barn, the inner structure.
Oh, okay. So Huntington Road, is that the dump road?
Yeah. The only one that has a pole barn there is Bill Gerriak's place.
Oh, yeah. So I would say no, I don't, I don't know, and none of us know what that is, so I wouldn't be concerned with it.
Then you get over in there, getting into Russell Watership.
Yeah. So, yeah, the rest of those fire station, so library, police department, which is us, yep, town common. Definitely Watson Park, Blanford Town Hall, transfer station, yeah. Um, Blanford Historical and the post office, okay.
Yeah, and then I didn't know if we wanted to have the, the Fiber Hut. Well, North Blanford Road.
The cemetery bought that property. I don't know, five, six, eight years ago. And it was originally for the new cemetery garage for storing our equipment, and then it kind of became a compound. Where the hut, they, they needed a place for the hut, and that was the ideal location, so the hut's in there now, and.
The dog thing we spent money on for some reason.
Yeah.
I don't think.
They do use it. Yeah, I, I've seen animals in there, so.
Okay, I mean, so I guess it might, may have to be ADA accessible only because we have a, we have a kennel there that, that in theory, the dog catcher was supposed to be able to put dogs in overnight if there was a dog that was found, so.
But also state police have dropped off stray dogs.
Stray dogs, okay, so there you go then, Joanne.
If the public isn't, doesn't have access, why is ADA important?
Well, if they do, because of the kennel, I guess is what he's saying, but yeah.
The police.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I was saying, you know, this, this property, as well as the, you know, the water filtration plant, it might not make sense to include them on here, because they're really, I don't think, supposed to be accessed by the public regularly. But I just wanted to put the, the question to the group.
There has been a lot of talk about doing something with Long Pond so that residents can access it for, you know, some sort of walking and stuff, because it is a beautiful area, so. Working with water department on that, so.
There, there are two sections of Long Pond, one that's available for passive recreation, and the other one is restricted.
Yeah.
And Gordon can tell you better than I can.
I'm sure.
And as far as the fire station goes, it'll all be on one floor.
Yeah, the new one.
Yeah, so I could, I guess it'd be accessible to most anybody.
Yeah, they just look at like doorway width and stuff like that.
Doorways have to be a certain width anyway.
Yeah. All right, okay, thank you, Christopher.
Yep, uh, okay, and we'll move on.
No, he's switching screens.
Trying.
He's trying to switch screens.
Uh, give me a second.
No worries. There we go.
All right, let's see what's left on our list here. Uh, okay, green communities, so we brought up opportunities with green communities last week. I attended a webinar, I think on Tuesday, that the Green Communities Division hosted. Based on that, it sounds like, I mean, I know we were particularly interested in eating fuel stuff. It sounds like opportunities there are pretty limited, and I have a few details on that. However, however, in conversations with Chief Weidis during her budget request meeting, she mentioned that the, the additional patrol vehicle she's looking at could be hybrid. And I think actually she assumed it would be hybrid. And it sounds like Chester is very open to collaborating on a, a grant application for that, and I know that's something that they're, they're encouraging this year. There were a lot of things with green communities that they were not encouraging this year, that they have in the past, but that was something they were, they were interested in. So I can take a look and reach out to Chief Weidis and Chester, and we can talk about putting together an application. And they're due, I believe, April 22nd, so. Get something together.
Wasn't that part of our requirement at Green Communities that we are moving towards? Purchasing more hybrid vehicles? I think, I think they talk about like your fleet becoming more hybrid as, as you start to replace them. I, I could be wrong, but I think that was part of. Okay. Great, that's exciting.
Yeah, so, and so we'll, we'll look into it a little bit more and then hopefully be able to get an application together in short order. Another issue, and I, I don't know if this has come up before, before the select boards. Mark Gold from the Long Meadow Select Board reached out. Essentially, Long Meadow is trying to recover some funds from the Hampton County Retirement System from debacle a few years ago when they had an executive director or somebody basically, you know, blowing it on vacations and things like that. So they were, they are just looking into, you know, a legal effort to get those funds back, and so far Chester, Hampden, Munson have all indicated an interest in, in joining their legal effort, and other towns may have as well, but I just haven't seen them, so. Just wanted to put it to the select board if that's something that we're interested in joining them on. Just wanted to put it to the select board if that's something that we're interested in, joining them on, uh, you know, in terms of sharing legal expenses. Um, and I can actually, let me pull up Mark's email so you can take a look at it.
They had sent us a letter and we had, we had responded with a letter in support of, do you guys remember reading this?
No.
There was a letter that was sent to us about the money that was misspent. Um, and he came and actually talked to us. He actually presented to us, um, the guy from Long Meadow who's, I think he's heading it. Um, and he presented to us and explained what had been going on with the misuse of money and how they were starting. Because we pay into Hampden Retirement.
Okay.
Um, so we, and then we had said, yes, we absolutely support this. This, um, you know, you going forward with this. Um, so here's, this is the letter that, um, Christopher is sharing us from Mark Gold. He's the one that would have come spoke to us, I believe.
The name rings a bell.
The key, I bolded the key text here.
Improper, so, uh, joining in the pursuit of recovery of improper expenditures. Beneficially, we should share the legal costs of this pursuit as well as recovered funds.
And, and how much are we talking, Christopher?
Well, so that's, that's a good question. I don't know exactly how much the town or town employees might be owed. Um, so that's something we could look into and just see, you know, is it, is it actually a substantial amount? I can, I can. Get in touch with somebody. I'll have to think of who the best person to reach out to on that is.
I think that for me, a decision would be, um, I mean, the fact that Chester is interested. Does sway me a little because I feel like we're about the same size. So. If they're interested and they feel like it's, you know, worth their time and money, then it does make me feel like, okay, that. That feels a little bit more like it might be worth Blanford's time of money, but I would be interested to see. What kind of a cost we're talking about and what kind of a, a money loss we're talking about that we would be recovering, I guess.
Yeah, okay, yeah, let me, um, and I'll also reach out to, to Kathy in Chester. Cause I know she was the one, she was bringing it before the select board. So, yeah, we'll see what background she has and then, yeah, we'll see if it makes sense and if it's worth it for the town to, to join in the effort.
Um, Mary has a question, go ahead.
How, how will Blanford benefit from participating in this?
We would benefit from some of the recovered funds, from receiving some of the recovered funds.
How much that is?
That's what I'm asking him, yeah. Okay, thank you, Christopher.
Yep. Uh, and I think that's pretty much it. Oh, real quick, um, and I know Kara, you're aware of this. Uh, we're currently working with Chester on a district local technical assistance project. Um, looking at kind of some form of shared either water system operator or superintendent. Or some other kind of merger of the two systems. Um, so we had our kickoff this week. Um, Gordon was able to, to make it, um, and we had a few commissioners, um, as well as Kathy from Chester. Um, so we should be, uh, getting a scope of work from PVPC in the next few weeks. So we'll be able to take a look at that. Um, the money is gonna go through, I think, the end of December. Um, but there's already, just from the initial conversation seeing, you know, it's kind of a lift. Um, so, uh, we were already talking about maybe having a, you know. Community compact money to, to extend it beyond, uh, into twenty twenty-three, et cetera. But, uh, yeah, so that's, we'll, we'll keep you apprised on that.
And there's a meeting coming up for that, right? Is it next week?
Yep, um, take a look at my calendar really quick.
The thirtieth, maybe?
That sounds right. And they're late in the day. Yep, yeah, it's thirtieth at five PM.
Okay. Okay. Thank you for sharing on that. I appreciate it.
Oh, yeah, no problem.
Um, alright, so we have.
I got something to add here, I think. From now on, if we're gonna have meetings like this.
Yeah.
I'd like a copy of what he's got up on the board. I can't see that with the glare.
Okay.
And I don't know if TJ can or not.
No, I'm looking, I'm cheating, I'm looking over his shoulder.
We should each have a copy.
Okay. Joanne's on it. Thank you, Tom. You don't want a screen, do you? Come on, we need a nice little tablet. Save a tree. Save a tree. Uh, Joanne, yes.
I, um, the safe. So Christopher's got phones and paperwork in Josh's office and it says safe everywhere.
Okay.
And then it has what looks like a combination here.
Oh, the safe we just got rid of.
And it rattled my lame brain.
Uh huh.
The problem is they're locked and the batteries are dead. You can't put a battery in it. Combination won't work without the.
Did we get rid of them yet?
No, not yet. So I'm asking tonight. Now that I was gonna try to open it, then I went, oh, it's because the batteries are dead.
There's a battery in the safe?
It's inside.
Well, that's stupid.
It's just a blank screen. You cannot do a combination on that.
Yeah, I mean, I guess we're not anywhere closer to opening it.
Did someone look at them?
Um, well, Justin did and.
Justin said he would remove them for us.
And I see there's the dials there, but it's black. And I was like, well, I'm missing something. And then it occurred to me that there's batteries and I remember the conversation. They got locked somehow. Somebody pushed the doors closed. And the batteries are dead, so we cannot use the combo door.
Wow, cause like on my safe one, it's, it's got the battery backup, but the battery is external. You know, you just need an Allen key to get into it.
Apparently this one isn't.
I guess not.
I mean, take a look at it if you don't mind.
No, I'll, I'll give it a look. Cause usually underneath the dial, they have.
I can bring my torches now.
There, hey, that'll work.
Oh, Lord.
I'm retired.
Alright, um, alright, we have got a couple of things in front of us to sign. I have a sprinkler repair, so I just need to sign this, I think. Yes, he did. He sent me a message. Alright, today's the twenty first. I do not know the purchase order. And then I have a mast pike contract. Um, is this to refund us the money from the pipe calls?
Is that what Dave Waddle was talking about reimbursement from the pipe?
No, we, we.
Oh, yeah, I think this is from fire, cause he told me I had two things to sign.
Is that a contract?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the new contract for the turnpike, I believe.
Yes, it is.
And what that does is we get so much an hour. For whatever we take up there.
But they haven't paid us in a while.
That's because their contract ran out. So after this gets signed and signed in, we'll get paid.
This one says I need a notary. Well, then I'm signing the other one first. Uh, today's, what's three, twenty-one, twenty-two? Okay, I'll read it out on the other one. This is select. You know what I realized? That my sash for the parade says selectmen, not select board. And I was like, Josh, I'm not wearing this. This is the other one. So.
This is the paperwork, if you want.
Select board. Share. Signature is it'll appear Carolyn, what's in there? Hi, and then that's you.
Okay, notary or corporation clerk. I need to get the seal.
Okay. I'm sorry, you have to go to your car.
No, I. I can sign it as the corporate clerk. Would you rather have me notarize it or?
Whichever works, whichever makes you not have to go to your car.
Okay, town clerk.
Okay. Alright, um, and then I have, okay, so then the other thing, Christopher, we have is, oh, they do have my notes on this one. Um, we have your, um. Contract, but I just have to give it to Joanne. That was my fault. I didn't give it to Joanne to make the changes we talked about. In executive session. So I just have to give it to her and then we'll have it designed for you. So I'll talk to you about these, um, Joanne, so that you know what they are.
We do have a new all department expense report.
Oh, I love when we have a new expense report. That brings me so much joy.
Payroll is three words behind that. The payroll is not reflected and that's why it's not showing how I massacred my payroll.
So payroll is three.
Three, three words behind.
So how, what are we, what are we doing about that?
Sarah is. Going back and forth with software, not being able to download it, something along those lines.
Does she need any up, like software, um, update or something?
Problem is software.
The problem is software.
Keep telling me, accounts just keep telling me that Sarah's working on it.
Does she need the big guns? Does she need us to send Christopher out there?
I'm sitting on seventeen, eighteen and nineteen that you guys haven't signed for payroll.
Okay, um. If Sarah needs us, she'll reach out to us, I guess. Yeah, if she, I mean, if she needs any support or anything. Um, I also have this, the memorandum. I don't think you did. Okay, the memorandum of inequity in the reimbursement of Commonwealth.
You remember when that came out, you asked Phil to put that on the website so that people were aware of that.
Okay.
And I don't see it anywhere. Post it. I don't know if you still want that to happen, but it hasn't.
So this was the thing from Susan Baum. So in the meantime, vocational auto district town should request, oh, that we're asking people to write letters. That's what it was. Yeah, it might be too late. Alright, uh, and then I've got a COA. Oh, this was just a copy.
Those are two new or, or not new, however, requests that I found.
That you just made a copy for me.
Right.
Okay.
Tom turns his in for.
Okay. No, I wasn't gonna take that up now, cause we don't have the money in there.
Well, you've got the money for this.
This is for Hilltown looking for, I don't, it's not asking for fifteen hundred though.
No, that's what they agreed with, with me. So as the town's representative, I'm asking for fifteen hundred.
So they're looking for fifteen hundred and they're from each town, right? This was the one.
Whatever each town contributes.
Okay.
Like Chester's contributed three thousand. Uh, we're, we can do fifteen hundred. I'm trying not to break the bank.
Got it, okay. So we're looking, um, so this is a request for ARPA from the Hilltown Ambulance. I don't think I put it in here yet. Um. And it was for, what was that? It was a repair for something, wasn't it, Tom?
For bringing a building up to OSHA standards.
Okay. Um, so I'm gonna add it into here, um.
Did you wanna make a motion on this?
I can't yet, she hasn't, I, I gotta get the chairperson's permission.
Um, uh, wait, it's Hilltown. No, it's not Hilltown Ambulance, it's.
Hilltown Community Ambulance.
No, I'm gonna say Angela Markham, Angela. That's gonna spell that wrong.
M U L K E R I N.
And it was to, um. Bring, so it's reimbursement.
But I think we've got fifteen hundred in there.
Up to OSHA standards. Yes. Okay, so, um, we do, at last I had, we had the twenty-nine thousand remaining.
So with that in mind, I would make a motion. That we send fifteen hundred dollars in ARPA funds. To Hilltown Community Ambulance for the building upgrade.
I'll second that for discussion.
Fifteen hundred.
Um, any discussion?
Nope.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great, so we'll just need, we, I don't know if you need anything other than that.
Before we go off of this.
Yeah.
This one here, they're doing the same thing they always do. They want money, but they don't tell us how much.
Yes.
They want us to buy them a, a new van. It means it's gotta be handicapped and that's gonna cost about sixty thousand dollars.
Well, they were gonna get back to us with a price, so we're. So we are just.
The story on that is, we got lost, we couldn't find it and then we found it. So I'm giving it back to you. And they, COA realizes that there is no money right now. So they're, they're working with, and I forgot who she said, she's working with somebody to get a price.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, we also are looking at another ARPA request coming in. Um, I just was emailing back and forth with Russ from, um, the animal hospital. He hadn't realized that there was a separate request because he had been part of the discussion, um, for the Business Association. Um, and had mentioned that they had to, um. Didn't, you know, use some funding for COVID and some reimbursement and stuff like that. Um, so he was, I directed him to where he could request something. So he's gonna do that. Um.
You don't know how much he's.
I don't know how much he's requesting, um, no, I don't. And he was also looking to try to work on something with that grant for some frontage. They were looking to replace some hedges on the front. Um, through that other grant.
I didn't see your message until after Chris answered, I said, yeah.
Oh, I, I was spelling ARPA wrong in my search of this website, so. Chris just, Christopher had to just spell it out for me and I was fine. Um, alright, I think that that's it.
Nope.
Nope. I'll just, oh, you keep reminding me. Okay.
You don't wanna do it yourself.
No, we can do it. I just have to, pull, pull my email. Alright, email. Yes, I signed that for Joanne and this one too. Alright, all the part. Job study. Um, so let's do the math. It's, well, it's the end of March, shown July, August, September, October, November, December, Virginia, February, March. So we're nine months in. Nine out of twelve, so seventy-five percent. Okay, is that right? Seventy-five percent? Josh, I'll share my screen with you. I don't know if I'm allowed to share. Josh, sorry, Christopher. It's not gonna be.
No worries.
Um, I can't share my screen with you. Do you have the all department expenditure report?
Uh, yeah, hold on, I can pull it up.
Okay, so that's what we're looking at. I'm looking for seventy-five percent. You did. I'm right, I'm, I got it, it's right here. Um, and he is killing a giant tree with his over there. I know. Okay. Oh, Christopher shared his objective. Alright, so, um, I see a seventy-eight, but I suppose we'll let that slide. Ninety-eight town clerk expense. There's twenty-six dollars left in there.
We're gonna spend it too.
Okay. Every last penny. Um. Town Hall Miscellaneous is, we already know that's going over. So, oh, F, uh, that's one thing I wanted to talk to you about. Christopher, the, um, so Town Hall Miscellaneous includes mowing. It's at eighty-eight percent. Um. So John was just talking about the spring cleanup. Is it spring, spring cleanup? Um, so that's gonna be started. I don't know what, we talk about this every year. I don't know what you guys wanna do. I have to like sort of back off of it because it's my husband's landscaping business that.
Spent eighty-eight percent of the money.
Correct, um.
I'm gonna do a lot.
But I don't know if you guys wanna talk about the process again for the bid to do the lawn care for the town buildings. But just so you know, John is planning on doing the cleanup.
Well, he's on till June thirtieth anyway.
Okay, so. He's planning doing the cleanup and he know, he was taking a look at it and he said that there's a lot of gravel cleanup around the building from the plowing and stuff. So I know that that's, that will take some time. So, but it is on his radar. He's just waiting to make sure we don't get another snow before it starts. Um, but so that is going to, that budget, I, we are. Um, but, so that is going to, that budget, I, we already can foresee that that's gonna go over, especially with mowing and whatnot. Um, all right, so let's see, we got eighty-two percent at external I T support. We're already over with fuel, so we're gonna be moving money for fuel. Did, so they let us go over with fuel, the accountants, we can, like, what happens with that?
The only thing that can go over.
So I don't know how they let that happen, it's over two hundred dollars.
It's over right now?
Mm-hmm.
Fuel?
Yeah, Town Hall fuel. It's over by two twenty-four. So we're, I don't think we can move money yet, though, right? We have to wait till May, June, I feel like it's May. Um, what's next? Ooh, there's another one, that's fire department expenses is over too, but we already, yeah, yeah, that's right, we did that one already.
And as soon as he gets that contract back, the state said to.
Perfect, good, so that's gonna be fixed, all right, vocational is over, but that's just the way it is, there's nothing you can do about that. Um, vehicle fuel highway, again, another fuel line item, that's, we only have nine hundred dollars left there. Two hundred dollars left in highway garage maintenance and repairs, and we got the trucks still in, that's not good. We're over by eight hundred dollars on highway garage utilities. Uh, yes, salt and sand definitely went over, five fifteen thousand, oh, God. I didn't want that to be the real number. That's salt and sand, but there's.
Yeah, but he's, I don't know what he's got right at the moment, but at the time, this was, was printed, he had eleven thousand in his oil and water expenses.
Yeah, you should see the bells I just put through.
Well, what I'm looking at is if we go on, if there's still, we can transfer some of that to his snow and ice.
He's been using the snow and ice?
I pointed that out to him when he started running out, um, so he's been, I think he was not using it exactly the way it was meant.
Um.
I know, I have an experience with that from when I was part.
You've been burned. Uh, library expenses are eighty-nine percent. I don't know if, um, Nicole, I'm sure she's aware of that.
We wanna spend it all in eleven months instead of twelve months so that we don't have anything hanging over
Okay.
in June.
Got it.
Cause problems and to hate them.
Okay.
Yes.
All that extra money liner and.
Let me ask you a question here. You got one? Where the hell did I see it? Distracted. We have one item there for, uh, oh, yeah, uh, that's Public Safety Berkshire County Dispatch, you got sixteen hundred. Change in that, is that, that's not been touched?
What page are you on?
Uh,
Page four.
I thought we paid for half a year or two.
It's a, it says expended none.
Hilltown Community Ambulance, no.
No, no, the Berkshire, right at the top.
Berkshire County Dispatch, we must have a bill yet for that one.
I don't know. It's kinda hard to fathom that they didn't build.
Or maybe it got charged to another account, that happens, it, it may have been posted to.
Yeah, that's true. That's true.
Well, it was, it was a standalone thing.
Yeah.
The dispatch. And they were pretty prompt about sending us reminders.
So is that a, um, chief, um.
Yeah, Berkshire County Dispatch.
Okay, I don't have any other questions, that was fun, so is.
Yeah, when can we move money?
When can we start to move money? I don't think, um, Christopher, do you know that in the budget, when we're allowed to move money, I think it's in May.
I didn't get the question.
Oh, we're at, we're wondering when we can start to move money in line items.
Yeah, you mean when free cash, that window.
Yeah.
Um, I have to check on the date.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, there's a, there's a period you can move it between salary and expense, where normally you can't.
April, we did start shifting money around in the budget.
No.
We, we don't have enough, we, twenty-six dollars isn't gonna send us to our gene conference.
Okay.
We weren't gonna go this year.
Okay.
So we spent a thousand dollars on archival supplies.
Yep.
And the reason we spent that much is the more, the more we bought, the better the discount.
Okay.
And it's, it's critical stuff for the, for the office.
So how much do you think you need to go to the, the, um, conference?
Between six hundred and eleven hundred.
Okay.
It's, it's three, three nights in, um, for this transportation and wheels.
Okay.
When is it, Mary? In June, okay, so maybe, are you gonna handle it at your budget meeting?
Okay.
Cause we've got other funds that we haven't extended that we would be willing to put towards.
Oh, perfect, okay, then that's not a problem, yeah, okay. Okay.
Here's another one. Uh, debt principal, landfill principal, excluded road repair.
Yeah, I don't think we.
I mean, there's a, there's a hundred and ten thousand dollars in there.
We don't worry about anything past page, water department. That's like.
Yeah, but I mean, if you're gonna be looking for funds to.
Yeah, but this is, these are different, these are not light items that we pay out of, these are different types of accounts, those aren't things that we look at. I don't know how to, I don't know how to explain it in other words. All I know is that we stop at the water department and I don't care about anything underneath it.
The accounts and the treasurer will slap you.
Yes, that's.
Oh, is that right?
Yes, that's what happens.
Damn it.
Those are, those are good words. Um, all right, so I think we're good. Um, that's it, so we will, uh, be here next week at the same time.
All the time.
Same time, same station.
Same time, same station, seven forty. Meeting adjourned.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Um, did you stop recording, Christopher? Oh, wait. Hold on, don't leave yet.
Put you down for executive session because I thought you were working on that, so I don't know how we deal with that.
Oh, it's okay.
Yeah, I know, but do, do we have to do a motion or something?
No, I think we just don't have to go into it.